We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:08 on the Thursday evening, 8/6/2020. If everyone could please stand for the flag salute. I know there's not a flag in front of us, but I would appreciate it if you did. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have a roll call Heather, please?
Art?
I see. And I- We can't, we can't hear you, Art. But we know you're there.
Okay. Brandon said he's gonna be late?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? I'm here.
Yes.
Katie David Jones?
Here.
Katie Norton?
Here.
Leslie Pearson?
Here.
Junior Drago?
Here.
And Sandy?
Here. So, thank you everyone for attending. We appreciate the public being present at our council meetings. Nice to see everyone here. Sorry, we started a little late. The next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for June 9th, 2020, the regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Was that Brandon?
Yes.
Okay. It was, motion was made by Art and seconded by Brandon to approve the June 9th, 2020, regular meeting. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion passes, 7-0. Next is the approval of the minutes for July 7th, 2020, regular meeting. Motion on the floor, please.
So moved.
Okay.
Been moved by Junior and seconded by Art to approve the July 7th, 2020, regular meeting minutes. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion passes, 7-0. And then we can see we've got, um, did we get any new people that just signed on? I don't think we did. So we'll just go on to the financial report ending July 31st, 2020. Do we have any questions in regards to the financial report? Okay, hearing none. I'll need them, oh, Art, you have a question?
I wanna know under what line, and maybe it is under the street fund, but where did, what could we spend on all the yellow paint?
The street fund, for sure. Yes.
Even low.
Well, you see them out, and now, since you brought that up, when we finish Columbia during the chip sealing and stuff, we'll have a professional street striper come and do all of Main Street and all down Columbia. So. They didn't hear what I said?
No, not the first part.
No, we didn't hear you.
Oh darn, I gave a nice speech. Okay. I said yes, that the yellow paint would come out of the street fund, and that when we finish doing the chip sealing and paving on Columbia, we have made an agreement with a professional street striper, and they will do all of Main Street and Columbia. So it will all look really nice here. The other thing about on the financials, I would like for you to look at the very first column because that is our beginning budget. That's what we, oh, there's Marta. Marta, did you have anything you wanted to say about the financials?
You're muted, Marta. You're muted.
You're muted, Marta.
Will.
There you go. Oh.
Are we having technical difficulties?
And she's not muted.
Maybe her volume just needs to be turned up.
We can't hear you.
Marta, we're unable to hear you at all.
She could actually type it in. Let's see what she says.
It was like, she said she'll do that.
Okay. Gotta love technology sometimes. Says this is the first month of the fiscal year of 2021. And so, we're starting on a new budget. Correct, Marta? So do we have any questions that we wanted to ask, Marta? No? Okay, so let's hear a motion on the floor to approve.
I move to approve the financial budget.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Katie and seconded by Junior to approve the financial report ending July 31st, 2020. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Leslie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Art?
Something happened to Art, I'm not sure what, so.
And Sandy?
Yes. Motion passes, 6 and, we're just gonna put him in absent for now. Let me call him and see what's going on.
Howdy.
Hi, are you having technical difficulties?
I didn't think, all of a sudden it just went off, offline.
Okay, well, go ahead and try to sign back in.
Well, can I just stay on the phone?
Yeah, that'd be fine, as long as you, yeah, as long as you can hear us.
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay. So did you all hear that, that Art is gonna stay on the phone? Okay, great. The financial report, a motion was made by David and seconded by Junior, right?
Katie?
Or, I mean, okay, thank you, Katie and Junior, and then everyone voted yes, but we didn't get a yes from you.
I would vote yes.
Okay, the motion passes, 7-0. Okay, so next on the agenda is pre-arranged presentations. It doesn't look like we have any, but we'll go to public comments. Do we have anybody that's on here from the public that would like to say anything?
Yes, Greg Zodi, I'm the Director of Community Development for Moro County. I just wanted to attend y'all's meeting and offer my services in the future. I'd like to help y'all out however I can.
Thank you, Greg.
That's all I had to say. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's nice to meet y'all.
Nice to meet you too.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Baby and Peewee are over here too, so.
Oh.
My children, sorry.
Tori, I know that you have a chamber report, would you like to go next?
Sure. So with Phase 1, we are not working in the office at the moment, we are doing from home. There is not a whole lot to report. We are just working on trying to get the word out to our community about grant programs that are available and who's open and who's closed, and how everything's looking within our community and stuff. So there's just not a whole lot, not a whole lot to report. And we're still asking everybody to get your surveys filled out for the business, the business survey, so we can come and talk to you about the opportunities for grants. We're finding that a lot of people have already received PPP in Idaho, and so that's making them ineligible for the grant programs. So we're hoping that round four is gonna have a different look. Not real sure though, what that's gonna look like. So other than that, Kelsey will be contacting everybody around town. We're gonna create a video project of how we're gonna find our business, own a business. Kelsey probably has reached out to you already, so. And that's about all we have, and we have a new employee at the Chamber now. Her name's Renee Mainly. She's our communication specialist, and she's gonna be taking care of Facebook and newsletters and communications between us and the community and our businesses. So we're excited to have her, and we're looking, things are looking good. So that's all I have for tonight.
That's great, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Tori?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Tori, not necessarily a question, but if you would let the businesses know that I have a couple cases of KN95 masks that are available. So if they are running low or need them, if they'll reach out to us, we'll make sure we get them some masks.
Okay. And the request that we've had that everybody's really struggling even through our survey is that gloves. There's gloves and no one can find them. So if somebody has an in on gloves, please let me know. We have a couple cleaning companies that are really needing gloves to protect themselves while they're cleaning during this COVID, and plus businesses, so let me know.
So what I would tell you is, is there is a shortage. I ordered a month ago, and I was told that we might, might receive our order in 2021.
Oh my goodness.
Okay.
Wow.
Well, I guess we will all just stockpile gloves when we can. All right, well, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tori. Anybody else have any questions for Tori? Okay, thanks. Anybody else in the, on this meeting tonight have anything that they wanna add? Okay, then we're gonna go ahead and move on. Next on the agenda is our action items. The first one is the Resolution 2022-2020, a resolution declaring the consent of the city of Boardman to include land within its city limits and within its urban growth boundary, together with land it owns on Tower Road within the boundaries of Columbia River Enterprise Zone 3. Oh, have you all read the resolution and looked at the map? Okay, do we have any comments? Any questions? All right, if we don't have any, then I need a motion on the floor to approve.
So moved, this is David Jones.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by David and seconded by Leslie to approve Resolution 22-2020, a resolution declaring the consent of the city of Boardman to include land within its city limits and within its urban growth boundary, together with the land owns on Tower Road within the boundaries of the Columbia River Enterprise Zone 3. Any questions?
Hi, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So, my question would be, is, is this going to stop us from being able to do a resolution tonight from the meeting we had earlier? I guess I would ask Rick that question since he was there, Karen.
No, this shouldn't stop because the city, it's a different resolution than what we talked about tonight, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Let me do a little talking then.
Okay.
This, this is a resolution stating that our property will be included in the Pres 3, where before we were always automatically included in that. But since we're not a co-sponsor this time, then they ask, you know, and so I, I put in all of the property that we either own or have control of, so. And I'm thinking that that way, you know, like in a year from now, if something, you know, if they start having, something going to the city limits or out on Tower Road, that we wouldn't have to come back and revisit this again, that this property is all in that enterprise zone.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Art, I'm gonna disconnect you because I keep getting a backlash from you, okay? On your phone? Okay. There we go. So, we have a motion on the floor, do we have any other questions? Okay, so I need a roll call, please, Heather?
David?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Katie?
Yep.
Junior?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Art?
He said yes.
Okay, and Sandy?
Yes. Motion passes, 7-0. Okay, other business. The Boardman Migrate Head Start Project Progress Report. Everybody has noticed, the Head Start Project has started, which is exciting, and they're moving dirt. So I'm gonna let Karen explain a little bit more in detail.
Well, I asked Marta if she would do this report because I've kinda given Marta that as a project to keep track of because we're just now getting more, we'll be writing checks and stuff. Marta, can you hear us?
I can hear you, but can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, all of a sudden.
Good. Yes, so I just decided to give everybody a, well, Karen asked me to write a little summary of kinda where the project is at, since I did list on there for those council members that weren't here back in 2015, when the whole agreement started to do this migrate head start, how long it's been of a process just to get where we are now. So, we're excited, they started pouring some curbs. As I listed, you know, they're gonna be doing some paving, and we're actually, production schedule. They won't guarantee a November date for delivery of the building, but they, four-year end, but we're still hopeful that maybe in November. But still, this calendar year, we should have a building there.
That's exciting. That's really exciting. Thank you, Marta. Anybody have any questions for Marta? Okay, you guys are quiet tonight. All right, so we're gonna move on to the police report. Chief?
So everybody should have gotten their report. I apologize, it was late today, so this Thursday meeting has been a weird one for me. So you have before you the report, are there any questions about the report?
No, I have none. Anybody else? No, I don't see any.
So I, I wanna take a few minutes and, and I, I actually have been working on a presentation to give to the council. But as you heard, we have our second special session starting Monday, if you haven't heard. They went from the initial sessions for police reform and use of force from three bills. Now, the last ones that they passed at the last special session were six bills. They're coming back at the table starting Monday with 10 bills. I, I have to say, I appreciate all the support that the city and the community has given law enforcement, but I really, really, really need you guys to step up. We're, we're feeling a lot of pressure with some of these bills that are being presented. They're knee-jerk reaction bills that have tons of holes. I spent four hours listening to testimony on these bills with both state and, excuse me, senators and representatives from the task force. Across the aisle from both sides, a lot of those representatives saying, hey, these bills are full of holes, and they really shouldn't be coming before us, but yet they're pushing them through. And what I want you to know is that the language that they're presenting in these bills are extremely poorly written. And I'm asking you as leaders of our community, I, I really need some support from, from our leaders. Real quick, some of the bills that they're talking about, for example, tear gas, they're gonna outlaw the use of tear gas in the case of riot, even though they pass it, they wanna redo that. They wanna take, in that bill with the tear gas is also pepper spray, which is what we use in a small canister when we were in a fight with somebody, or even to spray a dog that's gonna bite us. It would make that illegal for us to use. They, they keep referring to a chokehold. I, I find that somewhat offensive because law enforcement has never, ever, that I'm aware of in my 30-plus years, taught a chokehold. What we have been exposed to is what's called a carotid restraint, which never cuts off the air supply, it's, it's a blood flow to stop the person from, usually used in a deadly force situation. That's our last option. They passed it, said we can do that to save our lives, but then in the bills that they're presenting starting Monday, they're gonna, they want to completely outlaw that. It will make it a crime if a police officer uses that, even if they're fighting for their life. It's okay for us to pick up a brick, it's okay to pick up a rock, a pair of scissors, and, and beat somebody to death with this, but we can't use a carotid restraint. And it makes it a crime. I'm telling you, I, our officers are gonna go home each night. And I have a hard time with this, saying they can't defend their lives. If they're in a battle, they're gonna use whatever sources they need, and it shouldn't be a criminal offense.
I hate to interrupt you for a second, but for some of the new counselors that are new to getting support, what would you like us to do? I mean, what would you need us to do? Would you want us to show up at the state capitol? Would you like us to write letters?
Well, if I can finish what I was referring to and then give you a kind of an idea of the support that we could use, that would be helpful.
Okay.
So they're putting forth proposals that every police officer in the state of Oregon will wear a white uniform shirt with dark blue pants or a light blue shirt with dark blue pants. The cost itself, the cost itself to, especially for these large agencies, are hundreds of thousands of dollars to change this. We've worked really hard to set ourselves apart from other agencies. Our professionalism, the style of community policing that we do, and, and for us to have to change our uniforms so we all look alike, I can't see how that's gonna be a positive in anybody's life. The presentations that they're doing, our names, names have to be our first name and our last name on our uniform. That has to be visible in any light condition at 25 feet. So you have to be able to read our name at 25 feet. And then we also have to have police, okay, so those, the lettering on those are two and a half inches to be visible at 25 feet. Another example, our patrol cars will only, they all have to be marked units. They have to have lettering on the top of their cars identifying what unit it is at 2,000 feet. Well, those letters measure 16 feet to be visible at 2,000 feet. Now, our cars aren't even close to 16 feet long. These are damaging bills, they're gonna be very expensive. Our, our police officers put their lives on the line every day. I challenge anybody who wants to come and, and work in our profession per day and, and see how difficult some of these situations are to address. You have a top-notch group of police officers, and with your support, we've changed the image of our department, and I'm proud of everybody who serves this police department. What you don't know, and, and my guys, well, excuse me, my troops would shoot me if they, if they knew I was telling you this, but I have officers on a regular basis that pull money out of their own pockets to make sure people who don't have food get fed. They provide clothing. I had an officer who, we have an individual that we deal with on a regular basis, usually not in the most good way. He had his guitar get burned up in a fire. One of my officers went out and bought him a brand-new guitar and gave it to him. Our police department dissolved their union, which is their support, their protection, for the purpose of opening up a charitable account in which they put money out of their checks into this account and give out to different organizations or different people that are in need. They don't have to do any of this stuff, you know, and I know I'm rambling, I know it, I'm very passionate about this. We need a very vocal response from both our community, and we need a response from our leaders, whether that be if you've got the ability to testify before our legislators or write letters of support. These, these bills keep getting worse and worse and worse, and we're gonna come to a point where police officers are not gonna wanna do this job. And we're getting to the qualified immunity. The legislators in their hearing, their testimony said qualified immunity is just around the corner. It's coming. And what qualified immunity does, the courts have ruled, the Supreme Court had ruled 40 years ago that if an officer does something illegal or unconstitutional, then the courts will allow an officer to be sued personally. If they act under a legal authority and within the US Constitution under qualified immunity, they cannot be civilly sued. I'm gonna propose to you, just to give you an idea what this looks like, each time an officer upsets somebody, they can file a civil lawsuit, and then that, that officer has to go out, seek an attorney to represent them in the court. And the type of lawsuits that you're looking at, years and years ago, I arrested a gentleman, I booked him into jail. Part of the booking process, I had to ask him his name, his birthday, all that good stuff. Didn't think anything of it. Five years after the fact, I was served a civil lawsuit suing me for copyright violation. Because I asked and used his name on that booking form, I committed a crime of copyright violation, in his eyes. The state of Idaho, the attorney actually had to represent us, and of course, the court threw it out. But if I had to continue to do that kind of thing, I, we don't, we don't make the greatest amount of money. And, and I can't afford an attorney every time I turn around. I can tell you, there's not one officer that I've spoken to in this agency that will stay if qualified immunity goes. I'm sorry, Mayor and Leslie both have their hands up.
I think what would be helpful is that maybe you could email us the bills you're, you're talking about, so we can do some research and help you, and be, and that way we can write letters also in support of not passing- also in support of not passing these bills. But if we don't know the bill numbers or what you, you know, what you're talking about, it's kinda hard to do the support without those bill numbers. So is that possible?
As soon as the bills are released, because right now they're a legal count or what they call a legislative concept, so they're not in draft or in bill format. I'm assuming before Monday, they will be in that format and then I will be able to email those too.
Okay, thank you. Leslie, did you have a question?
Just along the same lines, bill numbers and current status of where they stood in the legislative process. So, thank you.
Welcome.
As I was saying earlier, as far as the process, the bills keep getting changed and the language keeps getting changed. So I will give you the most current bill, the ones that have already been placed into law as of July, I believe, 3rd, those are the ones that are being revised. So we will have to look at those numbers. But I will get those out to you. And I truly appreciate the support we've received. Our community is a great community and they are supportive. But we need to be very vocal at this point because as we know, in eastern Oregon, we don't have a lot of influence over here. And I can tell you that all the testimony that I heard in those four hours of testimony was one specific agency and that was in Portland. And, but unfortunately, the laws that get made there affect all of us here.
Okay, thank you. We'll get those bills, bill numbers out to us and as much information about the ones you're discussing with this and we'll give you as much help as we possibly can, okay?
Sounds good. Also, I asked Karen to send you out some, an article and some videos. It might behoove you to take some time to look at those to get a better idea of that case in particular and that there is more to the story than what everybody was led to believe. So please take the time to look at those.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Karen.
You know, Rick rarely comes to us and asks us for anything special at all. And so I think if you're out in the community, if you belong to a church or to a community group that, whether they're meeting or not, if you have the list of names, maybe you could generate some real positive mail going down to our legislators. Because, you know, Greg Smith and Bill Hansel, you know, usually are very supportive. They, they understand Boardman. Because I think the fight is that we are lucky and have a great police department that look out after our community. But obviously, when we're watching the news, that's not what everyone else apparently has. So I think when you have something good, you need to really step forward and try to support that and get all of your other friends and neighbors to. And we'll send you out some, because, and I don't know, phone letters, I guess, work. But the legislators, they tell me one phone call is as good as 100 letters. So I can send you phone numbers too.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, committee reports. I don't think we, Christmas committee is ready to report yet, hasn't started yet. Karen, city manager report.
All right, okay. I, you've gotten a lot of information in the last day or two. I sent out my report in two different letters, but I had asked Robert Ekinrode to come and do his presentation so that you could see where the power lines out on, out by the, out by where the power lines are going, where they would like to put the new ones. And he is, has to be out of town on a family emergency. But he said he would be happy to come any other time. And also that Fletcher Hobbs and the Gates family have signed their agreements. And so that is, that process is moving forward. And then I think then next he will try to come to an agreement with Mr. Schu and the Falls. You've seen where the rec center had to close because one of the employees came down with COVID. And so it's getting to be a hard time here in Morrell County right now, I would say. I sent you a description of the Tower Road property because some of you were not here. Well, a lot of you aren't, I guess you and I, I don't know. Anyway, and the map. And so there's still property out there that would be for sale. And I guess if you needed to know anything else about that, the, we sold, the five acres that we sold to UEC was done probably, I think, before I came. And they've not done anything with it. And now they say it's too small for a substation when I talked to them about a month ago. So also in my report, I said, we really need to have an in-person workshop meeting. Because things are going on that, you know, we're having people come in looking at developing and stuff, that we need to have a workshop to see what you want to do and what our game plan should be. And we haven't had one for quite a while. And we're getting to the point we really need one. So look at your calendars. I'm thinking maybe the last, well, I don't know, August is the bits because school starts on the 8th. But anyway, see if there's some time there on the last week of August or the week ahead of that, the last two weeks here. See if there's any time that we can squeeze in one. Okay, next thing that I didn't write. You see, the League of Oregon Cities is, instead of mailing out their local focus that they used to send all of us and you'd find them on your dais, they're, they're going to send them on your email. So, you know, it would probably be nice if you at least opened it and kind of cruised it. The League of Oregon Cities Conference is coming up. And since it's going to be a virtual, I really encourage us to watch as much as that you can because they usually have really informative speakers. And this time, I'm not asking you to take three days off from work and go to the valley. I'm asking you to take a couple hours in the morning and maybe at lunchtime. And so anyway.
Karen, they still have to pay the fee, the registration fees to attend any of those.
Yeah, it's $35, I think, because the city always pays it anyway. It's nothing.
Correct.
But it is so important because the council needs to participate a little more in the League of Oregon Cities than sometimes we do.
Yes. Speaking of the League of Oregon Cities, Karen, that survey thing that we were supposed to all work on and talk to you about, that's next, okay?
So the next thing on my list is, has anyone decided what we would like to mark on our list? Because I'm going to send it in tomorrow. And, you know, we've talked about this a couple of months in a row. And I sent you out the description of what the questions were, the pros and cons. And so we, the very, A was beer and cider tax increase. B was broadband infrastructure and technical assistance funding. C is building, reach code, energy efficiency, local options. D is COVID-19 economic recovery investment. Digital equity and inclusion. F is expenditure citing for shelter and affordable housing. And if you are on your iPads or anything and you scroll back to your June, your July 7th packet, this stuff will be in there. So let's see, housing and service investments, H. I is increased budgetary flexibility during budgetary emergencies. Infrastructure financing and resilient, excuse me. I'm getting choked up here. Local climate action planning resources. Local emergency generation project support. Local speed setting authority. N, long-term transportation infrastructure funding. O, low-income energy efficiency and affordable programs. P, marijuana tax, local rate limitation increase. P, marijuana tax, local rate limitation increase. Leslie, have a question?
Leslie, go ahead. Go ahead, Leslie.
Thank you, Karen. I have a call with Jenna tomorrow morning to clarify a couple of my selections. I submit those to you tomorrow.
I'm sorry, you broke up and I couldn't hear what you were saying.
Oh, I apologize. I have a call with Jenna tomorrow just to confirm some questions I have about the selections that I think are important. May I submit those to you tomorrow once I finalize those options?
Well, what would be really, this isn't your opinion.
I understand, but we as a group have to contribute, right?
We decide as a group tonight what we need, what is most important. And it has to be submitted by tomorrow.
Okay, well, I'm not at a point to identify what is actually important to me until I can talk to Jenna.
Okay.
But I will defer to the group if you guys can come to an agreement on four points. I'm certainly amicable to that.
Well, I think one of the biggest four points is our broadband. I think that should be number one. Everyone agree with that?
It was one of my four choices.
Go ahead.
I agree broadband is one of mine.
Okay.
I also think the COVID-19 assistance is still important because we're yet to be out of this and I don't know how long this is gonna go on. So the more help we can get for people and businesses.
That's a great. Junior, what did you say?
I said that the broadband was one of the four choices that I had.
What were the other ones that you had?
I don't have that paper in front of me right now, but I will get it here in just a minute.
Okay. I'm trying to find it too.
Madam Mayor, may I, I can tell you the four selected. And perhaps if I change my mind after talking with Jenna, I can re-contribute.
That would be great.
Mine was the letter B for broadband, the letter N for long-term transportation infrastructure.
Wait, you broke up on that. Letter F for what?
I'm sorry, B for Bravo. E for Echo. November. And X for X-ray.
Okay. Thank you. Katie, do you know what you selected or D?
Yeah, I, I think broadband, I think the COVID-19. The Q, which is the mental health service delivery. And the S, the new mobility services are what I had selected.
Okay. Art, did you go through that? You're muted. You're muted, Art. You're still muted. Let's go to David. David, did you, do you have your paper in front of you?
I'm actually in the middle of camping right now, in the middle of the Great Beyond. So I know that I was gonna go for the broadband, the transportation, and I was, I was with Katie with COVID. And I, for the life of me, cannot remember the fourth one.
Okay. So Junior, did you find yours? Okay.
Yes, so you can, I was, B for broadband, Q for mental health, V for the wastewater management, and W.
The right-of-way franchise fees?
Correct, the right-of-way franchise fees.
Okay. Brandon?
Ditto on the broadband. Ditto on the COVID.
Just a second. Okay.
So broadband, COVID. And then I support whatever the other areas are. Those are the two main.
Okay. Art, I have Art back on the phone again. He's having technical difficulties. So Art, what were your choices?
Well, I believe and I have not heard mentioned that taxation on beer and cider should be raised. It's been years and that, you know, that's a source of income for the state. I think that should be raised. The broadband, of course, is obvious. The COVID-19, I really didn't, I don't know if you can.
Okay. Well, it's pretty clear to me that everybody, number one, wants the broadband. So that's the first choice, Karen. And then we had, most everybody picked the COVID. And let me get this back up. I'm not so sure I know what the digital equity and inclusion means. Do you, Leslie?
What number is that?
It's, uh,
It's E. For legislation and policies that are inclusive and equitable to all individuals and communities so that they have information technology capacity needed for participation in our society, democracy, and economy. It helps LOC partnering with schools, healthcare, and other stakeholders to ensure technologies are relevant, available, and affordable and accessible to the diverse populace and communities of Oregon.
Okay, thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
So did somebody, I had somebody else pick, I think it was the mental health, what was that?
Sandy? Sandy, I think most people, so the other ones that were repeated were mental health and transportation.
Yes.
So those were the other ones that were actually repeated by everybody.
Okay. Does that sound good to everybody? So we have the broadband, mental health, transportation, and COVID.
Tell me which transportation is, what number is that letter? What letter is that?
N for number four. Or might be S.
I picked S. That was the one that I was looking at.
X?
S, as in Sandy?
Yeah.
Yeah, S.
Tricky, I just got it. So there's three of them, actually. There's the N for long-term transportation infrastructure funding. There's S for the new mobility services. And then there's X for state highway funds formula. So out of those three, which would you prefer we mark down, Council?
I'd be for the first or the third one. Sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Leslie?
We'd select N for long-term transportation infrastructure. We'd select N for long-term transportation infrastructure.
Okay. I'm, I'm for N myself.
Yeah, I, I like that. I think that makes sense.
Me too.
Okay, so we've got B, B for broadband. The mental health, I don't remember which one that is. And then the transportation, which is, okay, Q. And, I'm missing one.
COVID.
COVID.
Okay, I've got it.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your participation and your hard work on that. I know sometimes, sometimes those are really hard to understand and, and they give kind of a brief description. But like Leslie did, which I commend her for doing, for calling, um, to see if she could get some more information. That's good job, Leslie. So, um.
I'll mark that off my list. So I think the next thing I wanted to talk to you a minute about was PERS. Because you know, uh, in probably January, we were talking about trying to take advantage of the, they were going to offer a 25% payment to us if we would pay a down on some of the PERS we owed. And that has turned out to be, you know, the lottery dollars. No one is buying lottery tickets and so is not being funded right now. So they're, they're in a big dilemma for the people that already had sent some money in. I think they're going to keep that money and try to match it, but they're not going to accept. A lot of the applications that were already presented, let alone ours that was on the waiting list. So I guess that's the wrong sort of that story. So.
Anything else?
I sent you out a letter today that came unsigned.
Yes.
And it's late in the day. And like I said, uh, I didn't see Jose on here. I was hoping he would.
He's not.
Okay. And so like I said, normally we, uh, if someone does not sign their name or put any kind of a, you know, place that we could get back to them with a rebuttal or whatever information they were needing, we usually just put it in a received file and that would be the end of it. But since we recognized the person that brought this to our attention, we, uh, did some investigation and found out, uh, that maybe the, the, that we needed to know, we, we needed to know more about what went on about this, I guess, or they did.
So I, I can brief you a little bit. I, I had a discussion with Jose, uh, early on and again today. Um, so the purpose of, uh, obviously you're aware during the, uh, event that caused a lot of damage at our local trailer park. The, uh, the owner of that trailer park was required, uh, through his insurance company to go through a process in order to receive funding to help, uh, remove those trailers. And, um, so he asked the city if they would, uh, he asked Code if they would, uh, send out an abatement notice, um, for the purposes of meeting the requirement for that landowner and the insurance company, uh, so that, uh, people who didn't have money to have those trailers removed, which is quite a few of them, by the way, uh, uh, it would not cost them anything. So that's the reason that the abatement letters were sent out. Uh, Jose has followed up with those owners. As of, I believe, uh, the next day or so, um, three of the damaged properties are going to be removed. And the owners of those properties, um, are happy that, uh, that they didn't have the money to have them hauled off. So it was a, a, a win-win. Um, I, I believe that it got construed different than, than, uh, what it really happened. But if anything, we were under the understanding that, uh, there was an emergency. We filed an emergency both here and with the county for the purpose of, uh, trying to get them help so that they can get their property replaced and/or get them assistance. Um, so we have addressed those issues. Uh, we are not abating those properties. We were trying to help, uh, the tenants, uh, who couldn't afford to have those properties removed, uh, their assistance. So, uh, just so you know where, where the city stance is on that issue.
So then it's been taken care of?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Karen?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could just, uh, well, so I've been in meetings all day today. And I, so you, in response to the bills, I just checked my email and, um, I forwarded to Karen a list of the, uh, issues and the letter that we got from our OACP lobbyist and the issues. So, uh, again, those are legislative concepts that are going to change. But, uh, she has the email and I asked her to forward it to each of the councilors. So you have a copy of it, um, and what the status of those current legislative concepts are.
Thank you. All right. Councillors, Leslie, do you have anything? Oh, looks like Drake, uh, Junior does. Go ahead, Junior.
So our next, uh, council meeting is going to be on the first of September. And I know in the past that having council meetings on the first day of the month is very difficult for our staff. So I was going to propose that we move it. And it's going to be tough to move it to the second Tuesday because that's a holiday. So we're kind of in a conundrum there, but I'm just putting out the fact that we are up against something there that we probably should discuss.
Great discussion. You're right. Thank you, Junior.
And actually, that next Tuesday is the first day of virtual school as well.
It is. So would Wednesday the second be better?
I'm okay with moving it to the next week.
Okay.
If that's okay.
The day after Labor Day?
Perhaps the Wednesday or Thursday of the second week would be better.
Okay. Wednesday or Thursday? What's everybody think about that?
I, I, I'm okay with that.
Is everybody open on the ninth of September?
Yep.
Leslie is?
That will work for me.
Brandon?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay, Karen, is that okay for you guys?
Well, you know what I was just thinking? Well, never mind. I was thinking about making it a workshop. But there'll probably be business to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think probably the ninth would be, uh.
Okay. So it's decided we'll have our next council meeting on the September 9th. Thank you, Junior, for bringing that up. Um, Leslie, do you have anything? Katie? Uh, David? No? Uh, Brandon?
Nothing.
Okay. Um, I guess then we're going to go now. Um, we're going to have to the regular council meeting into recession. And you, you're more than welcome to, um, come back. But we're going to go an executive session, um, under ORF 192.6602I for personnel. Um, and we'll, uh, the public is not allowed. So we're going to be closing this meeting and all the councillors will be, um, signing to the executive session. Is there anything else that everyone, anyone else wants to say before we close?
Hey, Sandy? Sandy, sorry, I was just able to sign back or to get back in. Can we do it the day after that, the Thursday, rather than Wednesday? On the 10th?
It's fine with me. We can discuss it when we come back. Okay?
Okay. Sounds good because I didn't get.
Okay, let's go into, let's go into executive session. And, um, thank you, everyone, for attending. And, um, we're going to leave and sign out and go into an executive session. Okay?
You might want to tell the public that if you are coming back, how they can get back in.
Um, if you are coming back to our, um, regular council meeting, you would sign into the, um, same way you did originally to sign in. Okay? All right.
Do you want us to excuse you?
I'll get you back in a minute. So the city council meeting is now re, re, um, zooming at eight fifty-eight. And, um, we, um, discussed Karen's, Karen Pettigrew's evaluation. So I'm going to need a motion on the floor in regards to what we discussed.
I move on the basis of our, our discussion that we move the city manager, Karen Pettigrew's, power to a hundred thousand.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Art, okay, Art to, um, approve, uh, Karen Pettigrew's raise to a hundred thousand. And it was seconded by Junior. Do we have any other discussion? Can I have a roll call? Is Heather still here?
She is not.
So can you write that down for us, Chief, please?
Yeah, let me, let me get a piece of paper.
Okay.
Leslie?
Yes?
David?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
David? Or, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, Brandon?
Yes.
And Art was a yes as well.
Yes. And so, yes. Motion passes seven and, seven zero. So do we have any other discussions?
Well, I forgot to tell you that, uh, uh, we, the fire department antenna was energized today. So if you live in that area over by there, you should be able to see that your broadband is significantly improved.
You got to sign into them and, and ask for, um, um, to have them provide service.
Well, I think here, now that we've got, now that we've gotten that, the antenna working on the fire department, we will send out like.
Yeah.
Pressure. And let people know if they're interested in the service to call. And what the number is and the price range. But it's going to be so fast, you won't know what to do.
I know. I wish, we had, I signed up for it and the guy came out and I had too many trees in the way. He even went up to the top of the house and was going to pull, put a pole on the top of the house, but it was, it was not getting it. So I have to wait for another.
I have it. I have it and it's great.
Nice.
Yeah, Rome Street is like super fast, like all of a sudden, we didn't, we didn't know why. Now we know.
So I wanted to tell you, so test it out.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Meeting's adjourned.
Uh-huh, good night.
Good night.
Bye.